Call the meeting to order. Please stand for the prayer. Today as this session opens, we pray for your presence will be before us and for everyone who serves in the decision-making process of our city. We pray for your direction which will lead our city to be strong and unified. May we continue the legacy of our founders. May we be granted this day of wisdom to make decisions which will be for the good of our city. We also pray for your special blessing on all those who are working to transform our city to make it a better place to live and work. Amen. Pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all. Roll call.
Counselor Mercier?
Here.
Counselor Nun? Counselor Roth?
Here.
Counselor Chow?
Here.
Counselor Conway?
Here.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Here.
Counselor Elliott?
Here.
Mayor Lee?
Here.
Counselor Samaras?
Yep, we have memorials.
No.
Oh, did you say?
We need mics here.
Yep. Oh, you're out of, you need a mic?
Does everybody have a microphone? Didn't see that. All right, so we have memorials. Counselor Mercier first.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber for Frederick Joseph Riley, 89 of Lowell, passed away on Tuesday, December 7, 2021, at Lowell General Hospital. He was the beloved husband of Emil Eduard Dufour, with whom he shared the past 35 years. He was a beloved husband and a lifelong advocate for gay rights. He was born in Lynn, Mass. on November 7 and was a son of the late Joseph Frederick Riley and the late Catherine Ellard Riley. He was raised in central Massachusetts where he attended the area schools. He then enlisted in the United States Air Force where he served his country for a number of years before his honorable discharge. After his service, he attended Rhode Island School of Design on the G.I. Bill. Fred was employed as an engineer at Raytheon for over 30 years before his retirement. He enjoyed art and was a member of the Whistle House Museum of Art in Lowell and was a supporter of the Merrimack Repertory Theater. He also enjoyed antiquing and was a friend of Bill W. for over 35 years. Fred was a lifelong advocate for gay rights and with his husband was one of the first gay marriages in Massachusetts, married for the past 17 years. Together, they co-founded Greater Lowell Equity Alliance. He was also a longtime member of Prime Timers of Boston. In 2007, Fred and Emil were both interviewed for a front-page article in the New York Times entitled Aging and Gay and Facing Prejudice in Twilight. Additionally, in 2015, they were the subject of a short documentary entitled Fred and Emil, which was a co-production of Image Theater and Breaking Branches Pictures produced by Jerry Bizance and Ann Garvin. In addition to his beloved husband Emil Eduard Dufour of Lowell, he is survived by his sons Jay Riley of Hollywood, Florida, Paul Riley and his wife, Robin, of Fort Madison, Iowa, and Brian Riley of Keokke, Iowa. He is also survived by his former wife, Virginia Riley, of Fort Madison, Iowa. He was also the father of the late Kevin Riley. I'd also like to offer a moment of silence in docking chamber for Garrett M. Sid Sheehan, devoted husband of Julie Sheehan for the past 43 years. Garrett graduated from St. Patrick's Grammar School in Lowell High School, class of 1962. Garrett earned a Bachelor of Arts degree in chemistry from Salem State College and received the first Master of Science degree in forensic chemistry awarded by Northeastern University in 1977. A veteran of the Vietnam War, 1962 to 1966, he proudly served his country in the Air Force with the 18th Tactical Fighter Wing during the early stages of the war. Stationed in Okinawa, Garrett fondly remembered coaching the Raiders to the All-Ireland Football Championship. Upon returning from his service, Garrett coached the Belvedere Team in Lowell Junior Football League from 1966 to 1968. Garrett began his career as a chemistry teacher at Bishop Fenwick High School in Peabody in the early 70s. He continued with his hobby of teaching for over 25 years and as an adjunct faculty member with the Criminal Justice Departments of the University of Mass. Lowell, the Middlesex Community College, along with teaching crime scene investigative procedures to recruit officers at the Lowell Police Recruit Academy. Garrett joined the Lowell Police Department as a patrol officer in 1978 and rose to the ranks of captain in 1992. Garrett retired from the Lowell Police Department in 2003. He was the recipient of several letters of citation and commendation during his 25 years of service. Prior to coming to Lowell, he worked with the Boston Police Department as a criminalist in the crime laboratory unit where he developed several innovative procedures for the analysis of physical evidence. A graduate of the FBI National Academy, he has maintained membership in the association for more than 36 years. He also held membership in the American Legion, the International Association for Identification, the Massachusetts Police Association, St. Patrick's School Alumni Association, Mass. Teachers Association, National Education Association, and Eastern Club, St. Patrick's Parish Building Committee, Parish Council Golf Tournaments Cultural Committee, the Organ Restoration Committee, and St. Patrick's School and Educational Center Financial Board. And boy, he was very busy. Garrett was a faithful and devoted and dedicated parishioner of St. Patrick's Parish throughout his life, and I personally can attest to that. Garrett is survived by his wife Julie Sockzawa Sheehan, his two daughters Erin and Megan, his grandchildren Kaylee and Garrett, Melanie and Abigail. He was also the brother of the late Thomas Sheehan Sr. and the late John J. Sheehan Jr., retired superintendent of police. We offer our condolences to his family, relatives, and many friends, as well as I want to mention and offer the moment of silence in docking chamber to all those who have passed away since our last city council meeting. May they all rest in peace. Amen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Counselor Roth?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a quick word on Mr. Sheehan. Most people my age or maybe a little bit younger know him as the Proctor at St. Patrick's Church, but he was a gentle, kind man, but also highly intelligent and served the community where he was his whole life. So may he rest in peace. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Samaras? Did you? No? Where else? Counselor Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to offer a moment of silence in docking chambers for Philip Dankos. Phil Dankos, longtime Lowell resident, passed away peacefully on December 16, 2021. He was the widower of the Mary Jean Brodor Chisholm Dankos and also the late Helen Chadwick Dankos. He was born in Lowell on August 30, 1930, and was the son of the late Daniel Dankos and his wife, late Martha Odie Wood. He was raised in the Belvedere neighborhood of Lowell and graduated from Lowell High School. As soon as he was old enough, he worked at his father's car dealership and auto repair shop at the post office garage. After high school, he went on to graduate from Boston University before enlisting in the United States Army to serve his country. He intended to make a military his career. In 1957, he was medically discharged from the Army with multiple sclerosis, which he would battle the rest of his long life. After obtaining a master's degree at Boston University, he worked as a physical education teacher and health teacher at Lowell High School. During his time at Lowell High, he was well-known and respected by the faculty and the student body. He was instrumental in the installation and implementation of the Lowell High School's first swimming pool. He was also a pioneer instructor in the first ROTC program. Physical fitness was a hallmark of Phil's life. Whether push-ups, jogging, swimming, or walking his dog, he stayed active until his very last days as much as he could. A talented storyteller, his vivid memory would be on full display anytime he recounted a tale from his long and interesting life. He also enjoyed traveling and countless charities benefited from his boundless generosity over the years. Phil was also a longtime social member of Long Meadow Golf Club, a member of Vespa Country Club, and a Freemason at the Lowell Masonic Center. He enjoyed a ballgame anytime he would get a chance, and he loved the Three Stooges. He had a great sense of humor and cherished his large family. More than anything else, his family will remain, his legacy. He survived by his children, Daniel Dankos of Pellham, Donna Lambert of Lowell, Jean Cafeterio of Drakett, Patricia Dankos of Seabrook, and Karen Casella and her husband, William, of Lowell, his eight grandchildren, Ryan Cafeterio and his wife Natalie of Drakett, Amy Costello and her husband Tom of Drakett, and Michael Cafeterio and his wife Susan of Drakett, Karen Dankos and his fiancee Andy Thompson of Kentucky, Christine Azanusi and her husband Jacob of Andover, Sheila Parent of Lowell, and Will and Thomas Casella both of Lowell, his great-grandchildren Nicholas, Andrew, Matthew, Landon, Carson, Mayor Riley, Violet, Alexander, and Daisy, his brother-in-law Richard Chadwick of Pellham, his sister-in-laws Evelyn Silver of Groton, Barbara Brodor of New Hampshire, and many nieces and nephews and close friends. Phil will be missed by many friends, colleagues, neighbors, and loving family. May Phil's soul rest in peace. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Samaras?
Thank you. I'd just like to talk about Phil Dankos. As a teacher, I would say he was very quietly effective as a teacher, but he was never afraid to come into anybody's office to talk about an issue. And any issue that he brought up, he was also willing to make that issue, whatever it was, work. So he was a very caring individual, and he'll be truly missed. Thank you.
Thank you. If we could dock in the chambers? Okay, next we have mayor's business. We have communication for remote and Zoom participation. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Counselor Elliott, second by Counselor Drinkwater. Two, two, we have a few people to recognize tonight. First, we have Emily Manning, first female secretary to the first female mayor, Ellen Sampson. If you could just stand up at the podium for a second, we have a we have a citation for you. We just wanted to recognize you and say thank you for your service, and we have a nice citation from the city council. Being hereby known to all that the City of Lowell, Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby commends and appreciates Emily Manning. In 1972, widow of the former city councilor Sam Sampson, Ellen Sampson, was elected as mayor for her second term. Then, this historic first female and second Greek mayor hired Emily, who also made history for being the first female secretary to ever work for any mayor in City Hall. Emily recounts that the mayor Sampson, who was a force to be reckoned with, was strict but fair, big advocate for the military, and her love for the city was quite evident. During her time as secretary, Emily got to meet senators, governors, and even former Vice President Sparrow Agnew. She was devastated when Ellen Sampson passed just three months after her second term ended. After working in City Hall, Emily went on to work various jobs, but mostly enjoyed working as a library aide at the City of Lowell Public Schools for over 16 years. Every now and then, Emily visits City Hall, walks the hallways, retracing her old steps, gazes at the Ellen Sampson's painted portrait, and remembers. Now, therefore, I, Mayor John Leahy, hereby extend all the best to Emily. We are proud to honor the city's first female secretary to the first female mayor. The City of Lowell thanks her for her dedication and service to the city and local community, given this 21st day of December by myself and the entire city council.
I want to thank you very much for this honor. It's a pleasure, and the two years that I served as secretary for the mayor were the most beautiful years of my life, and I did meet a lot, a lot of people, really. I enjoyed it. The only thing that I regret was not to take notes of what was going on in those two years, to go back. This is a beautiful, beautiful chamber. It has changed since, but it's like over 40, close to 50 years since I've been here, and I had to attend every single council meeting. Yeah, I didn't do the school, but I did the council, and it was very interesting. I just loved it.
Well, thank you. I appreciate you visiting my office, and I know you stopped in to other mayors, and we thank you for your service and being part of history.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it was a pleasure. Thank you very much.
Next, Sergeant Kennedy Catiago wasn't able to attend, his family wasn't able to attend tonight, so we'll do something later time. Next, we have the Majestic Barber Shop, 100th anniversary, and we also have another citation to honor you if you'd like to stand up and be recognized. George, we just want to say thank you for staying in the city and 100 years of service to Lowell citizens. So we have a citation for you, and it reads, "Citation here be known to all, City Lowell in Commonwealth of Massachusetts hereby congratulates and recognizes Majestic Barber Shop as well as current owner George Arthur Vosseris," they get, Vosser, yep, "on the occasion of their 100th anniversary." On September in 1921, George's father, Arthur George, opened up the Majestic Barber Shop with four barbers, including himself, an immigrant from Greece since 1914, and he deceased in 1971. Arthur probably couldn't foresee that his small business would thrive and continue to hit 100-year milestone, but he would definitely be proud of his son. George, years later, in the business, late, excuse me, years later, in 1963, George took the whole barber shop over. Over the course of the impressive 58 years of ownership, George has had a number of different barbers working for him, but his longest employee-registered barber, Rhonda Chauncey, has been there for over 40 years. The pandemic hit him like most small businesses, but they successfully managed to remain open, mostly because of their loyal repeat customers over the many years. Now, therefore, I, Mayor John Leahy, and the entire city council, offer all the best to Majestic Barber Shop. The entire City of Lowell extends its deepest appreciation and proud to honor and recognize George for his 100 years in business and service to the community, given this 21st day of December by myself and the entire city council.
I just want to thank all my customers that I've had through the years and thank the city council and the mayor and Rhonda that's been with me for 40 years, and my family and friends, and thank you very much.
And a friend of yours, Counselor Melonazo, who brought this to our attention also, so I don't know if he's a customer or a relative, but sure, yep, so thank you, George. Next, we were going to recognize Gary Seppi, Mr. John Shemley, and Mr. Christopher Dick for honorary citizen of Lowell, which I believe was motioned by Counselor Elliott. You don't want to get that wrong. So if you gentlemen want to come up to the podium for a minute? Well, actually, I'll let, do you want to say a couple of words for us, Counselor Elliott, or? We just want to recognize you, so I'll let, it was your motion, so go ahead.
No, thank you for recognizing me. Any one of my colleagues could have made this. It was voted unanimously for obvious reasons, so we just thank them for their contributions to the city, and I think a well-deserved recognition for fine gentleman, fine organization, who have contributed so much that we don't even know to the City of Lowell.
Thank you. So yes, we want to recognize you for all your contributions, say thank you. It doesn't get you out of any parking tickets, gentlemen, you still have to pay those, but we have a certificate for you, and we just want to say thank you.
I'll say something real quick. This is pretty special to me. I've always felt a citizen of Lowell. You know, I was born and raised right over the line in North Tewksbury, but my roots here in the city go very, very deep. My family, my grandparents, they had Haynes Florist back in the late 1800s. They started, so we had a business in the City of Lowell for 110 years. And then on my father's side, we had Conant's Market, if you remember that, over on East Merrimack Street in Nesmith there for a long, long time, over by the Saints Medical Campus over that way. So I have deep roots in Lowell. I love the city. I love working in the city. I love everything about it. So I really appreciate, this means a lot to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'm Gary Seppi, and I was born and raised in Lowell. I'm a Centerville kid, 01850. And I got to tell you, although I got married and I moved to another town, everything begins and ends in Lowell, and you got to love it. And my whole life is Lowell. So thank you very much for this certificate, this honorary citizen, although I never left.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to say, on behalf of my company and on behalf of Trinity and my cohorts here, I was hoping maybe George could take a little off the side while I was up here, but I don't know if that's going to happen. So, you know, in my life, I've had two wives, Gary right here, my work wife, and Linda right here, my real wife. And I don't really think that I would be deserving of this if she wasn't behind me 1,000% for the last 30 years with Trinity. So Lindy, on behalf of my accepting this, it's you and me that are really getting this award. So, and I'd like to say, our new bosses, I'm Pride Star right here, I just want to say, guys, John and Brian and David, thank you for showing up and supporting us. As you know, we merged, we acquired by Pride Star, actually, yesterday was the closing, so we're very happy about that, but just the fact they're here tonight supporting us just shows you what a great team we have here in Lowell, and this is just unbelievable. Thank you, thank you very much for everything. I appreciate all your support. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor Samaras?
Thank you. No, I would just like to thank Trinity for their philanthropy and all the help that they gave us over the years. I don't think people in Lowell realize the type of true philanthropy that was given by the Trinity Ambulance Service, but I can remember a conversation I had one time with Mr. Chumley, and I thanked him for helping one of the organizations at the high school, and he said, "If it's for the children, we're here. All of us are here, and they always have been." For that, I thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, gentlemen. So next, we're going to have the football team be recognized. We'll let these guys leave safely, and then if we want to bring them in. So next, we're going to honor the, we want to honor Lowell High Football Team. Cheerleaders are here, football teams here, the athletic
the 2021 season, specifically for their successes on Thanksgiving Day, defeating our rival, Haverhill High School, in a dramatic 41 to 36 victory. These student athletes are a sample of our many, many shining stars at Lowell High School. They represent the 112,000 residents of the city of Lowell with pride, excellence, and heart. We all applaud their efforts. I briefly would like to call up Ms. Alessa Luna and Coach Rob Pike to offer their thank yous.
Right, hello everyone, I'm Alessa Luna. I want to first thank everyone for having us here tonight, you know, to recognize all the hard work that these kids put in. It really is an honor to represent Lowell High School and the community as a whole, so thank you and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. We appreciate you recognizing us. The, the football team is really proud to represent the city of Haverhill, excuse me, the city of Lowell every time we go out there, like we did against Haverhill in that Thanksgiving Day game, and it, and it really was quite a wild game, and I think the lesson that all the kids learned from that is to never give up. We were down 28 to 7 at halftime, and the Lowell High kids never gave up, they fought tough the whole game, and we came back to win, and they constantly talk about how proud they are to be from the city of Lowell, and we really appreciate the recognition here tonight. And as Mr. Lizinski said, we have so many other team members who are obligated with other sports tonight, there's a big track meet in Boston tonight that we had many players on, but the kids who came tonight and, and the whole team, really thank you for all your support. It's great to be a part of this city that supports its athletics so well. The new stadium, the new turf down at the stadium, the brand-new high school that's going in, it's so clear that this community supports athletics really well, and we appreciate that. So, thank you very much.
So, finally, on behalf of the athletics department, the entire athletics department, I would like to wish you and the residents of our city a wonderful, wonderful holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Mersey?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm so happy to honor the Lowell High School, not only the football team, but the cheerleaders as well. Being a parent myself and knowing about the sports and the two daughters that were cheerleaders as well, I can show the pride that I had in my family. But imagine young students getting the desire to be football players and putting all that time and energy and hard work and, and athletics to try to make something and make this city proud of their accomplishment, and they waited all four years and worked very hard, and then the day came, Thanksgiving Day, very important game, and you go and you get the newspaper, and there's nothing in there for you. How sad is that? Probably not to the students, and if it is, they wouldn't probably say it, but what about the parents that are so proud and want to cut this out and use it as a memento, a memory of when my son was young, he was a football player, and they won the Thanksgiving game, or what about my daughter, the cheerleader, that cheerleader for the, for the group? Maybe you were not recognized, but you know what? We recognize you here, and we're very, very proud of you. Thank you for coming out of your way to come up here, because you deserve all the credit, all the recognition. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Danny Rock, and my colleagues for making this happen. We're very, very proud of you. You might have not made it in the paper, but you made it in our hearts, and the citizens of Lowell, we're very proud of you. Thank you very much, congratulations.
Councilor Samaras?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, Council Mersey did address the issue that perhaps you weren't recognized by the media on Thanksgiving Day, but remember one thing, you're part of a very proud history at Lowell High School. Athletics has always been an important part with the curriculum at the high school, and we have over 150 years of success at Lowell High School. And your game, that Thanksgiving game, and as your coach said, you were behind, but you were never, you were never really behind. You, you worked hard and you won because of your resiliency and your ability to work hard. You're a fine example of Lowell High School sports today, but you're also a terrific example of the history of Lowell High School, of the, the history of what our girls have been able to do and what our boys have been able to do in all the sports and endeavors. So, thank you for being here tonight and accepting our thank you for hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. David, if there's any money in the budget, that looks like a bumper sticker, you know?
Absolutely.
With the page, like the Patriots one, so, get those made up. Thank you for coming in. Councilor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to echo the sentiments of the, the councilors. Congratulations to the coach, to the entire football team, and to the Lowell High School. It was one of the most exciting game I, I've heard on, on radio, and what I remember close to it is, is a Hail Mary, and it was fitting for the season to win the game that way. And if you look at the team, it really is reflective of the Lowell High School, of our city, the diversity. I also just want to congratulate a fellow member from the Cambodian community, I want to congratulate you, the quarterback, a Cambodian-American, you know, to, I'm very proud that grows up here, born here, grows up here, and deliver this type of tradition for our city. So, congratulations to, to the quarterback, and your families here too, that I see there here. So, congratulations to everybody. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, team. All right, next on the agenda, actually, need a motion to accept and place on file by Council Rock, seconded by Council Samaras. City Clerk portion, need to accept the minutes of the municipal facilities, subcommittee December 14th, regular city council meeting, December 14th, for acceptance, motion by Council Chow, seconded by Council Conway. Being after 7 o'clock, we'll get into the utility hearings. 4, 4-1, Boston Gas, DBA National Grid, request installation of new low-pressure gas main on Gold Street to the end of School Street. Open up the hearing to anyone in favor, in favor? Is there anyone on, on Zoom, Mr. Clerk?
No, there isn't, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
In favor? In favor, that portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition? Opposition?
Mr. Mayor?
Sure.
Actually, I was just checking, I received a notice, it's, we have 131 East Merrimack, where Rizzo's Pizza is. Is that work going to affect that parking lot?
On this one, on Gold Street to, this is Gold Street to, to, oh, School Street.
Oh, okay, so I'm waiting.
Yeah, when I get to yours, I'll.
Oh, I thought there was a.
Yep, no, it's okay.
Thank you.
All right, hearing none. That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer the wire inspector for report and recommendation by Council Rock, seconded by Council Mersey. Next one is, Boston Gas, DBA National Grid, request installation of new plastic gas main at Dan, 43 Danko Street. Open up the hearing to anyone in favor? In favor? No one's here, Mr. Clerk, again, for that one?
Nobody on Zoom for this one.
Okay. In favor? Hearing none. That portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition? Opposition?
Good evening. Good evening, Dave Forwell and Comcast. I would like to speak in favor of the Comcast petition for Howe Street to place 84 feet of conduit to provide service to number 131 Davidson Road.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition? Opposition? Hearing none. That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer the wire inspector for report and recommendation by Council Elliot, seconded by Council Drinkwater. 4-3, Comcast, request installation of PVC conduit to existing, existing pole at Howe and Davidson Street. Open it up to anybody in, in favor? Is anyone in favor for this?
There is, there is a speaker coming in on Zoom, David Llewellyn, from Comcast.
Okay.
Good evening, good evening, Dave Forwell and Comcast. I would like to speak in favor of the Comcast petition for Howe Street to place 84 feet of conduit to provide service to number 131 Davidson Road.
Okay, thank you. Anyone in favor? In favor? That portion is closed. Open up to anybody in opposition? Opposition?
Yeah, there will be no issues with the construction crews doing the work there, and we'll work with the property owners to make sure that that lot is open at all times.
Excellent.
Okay, all right.
Great, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Your Madam Manager, I was just going to say, we'll, we'll follow up and make sure, you know, that, that there isn't, the trucks aren't blocking.
I mean, we're willing to help too, but I figured I'd come up and just check.
Let us know if there's an issue, but we'll, we'll follow up with them.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Anyone else in opposition? Hearing none. That portion is closed. Need a motion to refer the wire inspector for report and recommendation by Council Samaras, seconded by Council Drinkwater. Under Communications from the city manager, motion responses, motion A, response, citywide traffic campaign. Any questions, Council Conway?
Yeah, thank you, excuse me, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, first of all, I want to thank Christine McCall and, and certainly the city manager for the, for the excellent report that's outlining a, a campaign, or starting to outline the campaign of street and traffic safety. And I think, as we've talked about a number of times, is, there has been many motions by councilors here and past councilors addressing problems like the speeding, reckless driving, illegal parking, stop signs, the school buses, where cars are constantly going past the, past those red lights, and also the crosswalks. We, we've experienced that, I don't know how many times, where people will go right past the, the crosswalks. And, you know, and I believe, and I think we all believe, the fact that the first and the most important job that we have as elected officials and appointed officials is to protect and to make the city as safe as possible for all our citizens. So, again, I think it's, this, this safety campaign that we're talking about, as I've said in the past, I think it's extremely important, and it's not going to be, it's not going to be done in a, in a, in a quick fashion. I know there's, it's going to be certainly a lot of work and effort to bring these people to the table, all our partners, but I think that the partners certainly want to, through cooperation, do the best they possibly can, because it's in everyone's best, best interest. You know, we need the business community to be successful, we need to have cars moving in and out, we need to have safe streets to have people feel comfortable in, in the city of Lowell. So, again, I look forward to the continued progress of the, of this safety campaign, and, and again, I, I want to thank Christine McCall. It was an, an absolutely excellent and outstanding report that just really hit, I think, some real key points. So, thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any other questions on the report? All right. Need a motion to accept and place on file by Council Conway, seconded by Council Chow. Next, we have votes from the city manager. Vote to approve and amend the housing development plan. Mission away the full reading, second reading by title of motion. Commonwealth Massachusetts, city of Lowell and city council vote approving the amendment to the housing development plan for the city of Lowell. Any questions, Council Mersey?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager, is the object of this vote to increase residential growth primarily in the downtown and the immediate area?
It is, Counselor, to, to encourage developers to come and develop properties, including downtown properties, into housing. The H-DIP plan or the state's plan has been cut back, and so we're concerned that if we don't up our involvement, we may see development not happen because of the need. And, and this, I know Christine McCall has worked quite a bit on this, and she's here, but it is to try and support and encourage and incentivize development, specifically of the housing that we do need.
Right, and we're not talking about an alarming people in Pawtucketville or.
Oh, no, 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 this is, this is really like redevelopment of properties that, you know, had previously happened. So, the projects like Aiden Furniture is one that was done, you know, those were unused kind of mill buildings, and, and the, this H-DIP program incentivized a developer, wind development in that case, to come in and develop. But now that those incentives are being cut back on the state, we feel that it's important as our community that we increase our support, as many communities have. I think almost 50 communities have done that in response.
Because, as you know, there are buildings in the downtown that are vacant on the second and third floor, perhaps we could do something with that, and that's what the intention could be.
It, it would totally be supportive of that type of development.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions on the vote? Roll call? Actually, need a motion to accept, a motion to adopt, so, by Council Mersey, seconded by Council Drinkwater. Roll call?
Council Mersey?
Yes.
Council Nun?
Yes.
Council Rock?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes. 6-2, vote, authorize city participate in the Pace, in Pace, Massachusetts. Mission away the full reading, second reading by title of motion. Commonwealth Massachusetts and city of Lowell and city council vote, city council of the city of Lowell hereby votes to participate in the Pace, Massachusetts pursuant to the Pace Act and authorize city.
Any other questions on the report? Need a motion to accept and place on file by Council Conway, seconded by Council Chow. Next, we have votes from the city manager. Vote to approve and amend the housing development plan. Mission away the full reading, second reading by title of motion. Commonwealth Massachusetts City of Lowell and City Council vote approving the amendment to the housing development plan for the city of Lowell. Any questions, Council Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you to the city manager. Is the object of this vote to increase residential growth primarily in the downtown and the immediate area?
It is, Counselor, to, to encourage developers to come and develop properties, including downtown properties, into housing. The H-DIP plan or the state's plan has been cut back, and so we're concerned that if we don't up our involvement, we may see development not happen because of the need. And this, I know Christine McCall has worked quite a bit on this, and she's here, but it is to try and support and encourage and incentivize development, specifically of the housing that we do need.
Right, and we're not talking about an alarming people in Pawtucketville or.
Oh, no, 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 no. This is, this is really like redevelopment of properties that, you know, had previously happened. So the projects like Aiden Furniture is one that was done, you know, those were unused kind of mill buildings. And the, this H-DIP program incentivized a developer, wind development in that case, to come in and develop. But now that those incentives are being cut back on the state, we feel that it's important as our community that we increase our support, as many communities have. I think almost 50 communities have done that in response.
Because, as you know, there are buildings in the downtown that are vacant on the second and third floor. Perhaps we could do something with that, and that's what the intention could be.
It would totally be supportive of that type of development.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Any other questions on the vote? Roll call? Actually, need a motion to accept, a motion to adopt, so by Council Mercier, seconded by Council Drinkwater. Roll call?
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Nun?
Yes.
Council Rock?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Conway? Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
6-2, vote, authorize city participate in the Pace, in Pace, Massachusetts. Mission away the full reading, second reading by title of motion. Commonwealth Massachusetts and City Lowell and City Council vote. City Council of the city of Lowell hereby votes to participate in the Pace, Massachusetts pursuant to the Pace Act and authorize city manager to enter into a Pace, Massachusetts municipal assignment, assessment and assignment agreement with Mass Development. Any questions on this one? Need a motion to adopt by Council Samaras, seconded by Council Elliott. Roll call?
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Nun?
Yes.
Council Rock?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes. 6-3, vote to accept and expend FY 22 earmark funds, Calory Park Playground. Mission away the full reading, second reading by title and motion. Commonwealth Massachusetts, City Lowell and City Council vote authorizing the city manager acting through the Department of Planning and Development to accept and expend fiscal year 2022 earmarked state funds in the amount of $100,000 from the Commonwealth Massachusetts via Department of Conservation and Recreation. Any questions on that, Council Mercier?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm very grateful that money is coming in to refurbish the playground area for the Calory Park. But since we're talking about Calory Park, can I say another thing regarding that area? In the beginning, there was a lot of work put into the sidewalks along Stevens Street and the Highlands, and the company used the park to store their materials, and they Inappropriate place, right in the area that encompasses the monument in stone that honors William Calory, of which the park is named after. A disaster was created, and the veterans were in an uproar, and rightfully so. You see, Calory Park was named after William Calory, who was killed in the line of duty in Vietnam on February 22, 1966. So on May 22 of 1966, in honor, in his honor, the park was named after Billy with the assistance from the Lowell Post 87 VFW. They, and it was attended by Governor, then Governor Volpe, who was the guest speaker, and the ceremony was even televised on the Boston stations. The family of Billy Carter considered this place sacred, and when the equipment was dumped on this monument site and left in disarray, the veterans, myself, and residents took issue with the company. So let me report that Allied Paving and owner Robert Joyce promised to restore this site, if not better, to the way that it should be. Well, they kept their word, and then some. They stepped up to the plate, the company poured cement footing and installed three beautiful custom-made granite benches, and in the spring they will install, well, the granite pillars are there, but in the spring they'll put the chains surrounding the monument. On one bench is a poem that is from Arlington National Cemetery. On another is an inscription with the name Billy, of which all his friends referred to him as Billy. And John McDonnell had added his own special touch to the third bench. At the request of the family, there will be a rededication of the area where this monument rests, and all the work that was done will be highlighted. I'll keep everybody informed to this. This is magnificent, when you have a company that made a promise and kept it, and it's going to look so beautiful as it's starting to shape up really well. And I'm very grateful and proud, and I just wanted to make note of that, since we're talking about Calory Park. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on the motion? Need a motion to adopt by Council Rock, seconded by Council Mercier. Roll call?
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Nun? Council Rock?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Here.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Elliott?
Yes.
Mayor Lee?
Yes. 6-4, vote to accept gift of $11,948.75 from the GLHA. Mission away the full reading, second reading by title of motion. Commonwealth Massachusetts, City Lowell and City Council vote authorizing the city manager on behalf of the City Lowell to accept the gift from the Greater Lowell Health Alliance in the amount of $11,948.75 to be used by the Department of Public Works to replace damaged slide at the Pawtucket Memorial Playground. Any questions on this? Need a motion to adopt by Council Rock, seconded by Council Samaras. Roll call?
Council Mercier?
Yes.
Council Nun?
Yes.
Council Rock?
Yes.
Council Samaras?
Yes.
Council Chow?
Yes.
Council Conway?
Yes.
Council Drinkwater?
Yes.
Council Elliott? Mayor Lee?
Yes. Thank you. Ordinance of the city manager, ordinance, create position and salary for a bilingual human services coordinator, coordinator, council on aging. Need a motion to refer public hearing January 11, 2022 at 7:00 PM. Motion by Council Drinkwater, seconded by Council Rock. Ordinance, create position and salary of bilingual human services coordinator, council on aging. First reading, refer to a public hearing on January 11, 2022 at 7:00 PM by Council Drinkwater, seconded by Council Chow. Last ordinance, create position and salary for human services coordinator, council on aging. First reading, motion to refer to a public hearing on January 11, 2022 at 7:00 PM by Council Rock, seconded by Council Mercier. So there's no reports tonight, right? So we just have the wire inspector reports? So first one is Boston Gas requests installation of replacement of existing cast iron gas main with six-inch plastic pipe gas main on Rivercliff Road from Deanna Lane to Andover Street. Two, Boston Gas requests installation of two and, of two and four-inch low-pressure gas mains along Nicole Drive, Stewart Street, Montview Avenue, Mananuck Avenue, Pine Street, Alyssa Drive, and Raner Street. So I need a motion to accept and adopt the accompanying orders by Council Rock, seconded by Council Samaras. Petition. Nine-one, miscellaneous, Cristo Valitis Brothers Pizza requests installation of 15-minute parking sign at the establishment at 688 Merrimack Street. Motion to refer to the transportation engineer for a report and recommendation by Council Elliott, seconded by Council Conway. Nine-two, miscellaneous, Linda Theriot requests installation of handicap parking sign in front of 5 Ellis Avenue. Motion to refer the transportation engineer for a report and recommendation by Council Rock, seconded by Council Chow. City Council motions. First motion tonight by Council Samaras, request city manager have proper department conduct a safety study along Church Street to establish proper crosswalks and other pedestrian safety elements. Seconded by Council Elliott, Council Samaras.
Thank you, Mayor Lee. Madam Manager, actually, I made a motion regarding this area a long time ago, many years ago, regarding safety on Church Street. And I've talked to some of the business people on there, on Church Street. There's limited parking from the left-hand side, and you know, a lot of people do park in the parking lot of the old Zir's parking lot, I refer to as Zir's. Whether that's legal or not is not the issue, but the thing is, many people do park there, and they cross the street. At one time, quite a while back, there was a crosswalk in the middle area. Right now, the only crosswalks are at the beginning of, of the Church Street area, and then at the end of where the old Zir's store used to be. And we can say, well, if people want to safely cross the street, they should walk up to the crosswalk, one's several hundred yards away, and one's at least 100 yards away, 125 yards away. And I've been there, and I've observed people, you know, walking across the street, and it seems sometimes, at the beginning of Church Street, going towards Andover Street, people actually speed up when they see people on the street. You know, you don't know what, what, what are they trying to do, but the thing is, they, they accelerate, it's a straightaway, and the cars accelerate. So I'm looking at, is there a possibility of replacing and putting back one of the crosswalks where the businesses are? Or at least, but at least at this particular point, I'd like to see a safety study done as to how can we ensure that people will be safe in that area? Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions on this? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Second motion tonight by Council Rock. Request city council approve step increase based on evaluation ordinance employees on the grid who are directly responsible to the council. And then, did we want to include evaluation for the manager, put an amendment on that too?
Sure.
Okay, so include the manager under the evaluations. Seconded by Council Conway, Council Rock.
Yeah, just a matter of what council is in charge of towards the end of the year, so however you want to proceed, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah. The evaluation should be in if everybody's got them in, or make sure you get them in by the end of the week for the human resource. All right, thank you. Council Elliott?
Can, is Mary Calory still here? She is. Can you just explain the process? Because as I understand it, they're ordinance employees, and you're contract, Madam Manager, and by virtue of your contract, you're required to be evaluated every year. Same thing with the auditor and the clerk. And once those evaluations are completed, by virtue of the grading system or the score that has been done, is that raised? Not automatic, they have to achieve a certain score, but does it require a vote of the city council? I don't, I don't recall.
Well, not sure if it does, but who wants to answer that?
I believe it's just you have to, we have to perform the evaluation. If they achieve a certain score, then the step is included as part of the salary in the future.
That's, that's correct. So it wouldn't be a, it wouldn't be a separate process after that. In other words, it wouldn't be an evaluation, and say, like hypothetically, a satisfactory evaluation that would entitle somebody to movement, say, on the grid, but prior to that happening, having to come back to the council for another vote. So it would just, it would be the evaluation itself, and then that would trigger movement. But that process would have, have to take place here.
Okay, so there's, the, the motion is for a vote. There's, there's no vote required based upon the ordinance, correct? Or is there?
Council, it's, you know, mostly do the evaluation.
Yeah, once you do the evaluation, so we don't take a vote. We just have to do the evaluation, and then based upon those evaluations, the, the.
Right, we have to do the evaluation. That's the thing, there's no vote actually to take.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? Council Samaras?
Those are good questions that Council Elliott asked. So the thing, the thing is, the process, there's no more to the process. The process is complete. Once we hand our evaluations in, then the, the steps, everything else is automatic, based on, on the scores and what have you.
Yep.
So there's no follow-through. I mean, I want to make sure we complete it this year and not.
Yeah, once we complete it this year, it triggers, if you're on the ordinance and you're on the step, it, it triggers it, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Mercier?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. So are we going to get a form that we answer the questions, or do we just put something together ourself?
The forms will probably email, but Ms. Cal, Mrs. Calory, you want to?
Right, so I can give you the forms. They were sent out by Michael Gary, either through the email system or, but I can get you some blank ones.
I didn't know they were. Is there such a thing of a voice?
Yeah, I sent them, I sent them, I sent them through email last week, Council, we'll get you another one.
He emailed them out, so probably, I don't know what happened to it.
So is there such a thing as a, as a evaluation by voice?
I'm not sure. Do we do it by voice, or just we make sure?
A verbal review? A verbal review? Is there such a thing as a verbal review?
I can take a verbal review while we're here.
For one thing, this has to be done within a week. I don't expect this to go into a new council who never even.
Right.
Served with the people involved, so we have to do that relatively quick.
You can get the paperwork tonight?
I can get the paperwork and bring it back up to you.
Okay, that's fine.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Council Elliott?
So the process is according to the ordinance that we've done, that I can recall, is that there is a formal evaluation. We have had verbal evaluations as well, but the individuals need to be rated, they need to get a score, and they, by all city councilors, and once they get that score, then they're entitled to the.
If it's, yeah.
Evaluation. So we got it last week, turned mine in, and then it's, it's all about the process.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure, who's that?
Mr. Mayor. Council Nun, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Council Nun?
Question, Mr. Mayor, in term of the score. How do we score? Because the form that I received, I'm sure the council did too, listed as you either unsatisfactory, satisfactory, excellent. Is that how you score if someone was arranged in term of between better than good and excellent, and toward excellent? Is that, and we approve it? Does that mean that, that step increase will be provided?
Sure, Ms. Calory, you want to answer that?
Yeah, so if they get all excellence, excellence are goods, then yes, they go to the next step.
Okay, thank, oh, thank you very much. Okay, the other question I have is that, as far as the ordinance employee, under the ordinance, do you have been employed by the, the council at least one year in order for us to evaluate you?
Did you hear the question?
Yeah, I don't believe that is under for these three employees.
Is the ordinance indicated that whether, you just started, say, in the case of the city auditors a few months ago, is that enough for us to evaluate?
It's, it's really up to you.
Yeah, I mean, it's kind of the timing of it. She was the treasurer for, for us, and then she moved into the role of auditor, so, I mean, we are.
No, I, I do, I do understand that, Mr. Mayor, I just that while she was a treasurer, she not under her purview. So that just, that, that's, that's, that's just my question, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? All those in favor of the motion, say aye. Last motion of the night, Council Rock, request city council assign special municipal employee status to the position of school committee under Mass General Law, Chapter 268A, Section 1.
Mr. Mayor, there's a registered speaker here.
Right, right. Let me get the second first, the second on the motion. Council Mercier?
Real quickly, Mr. Mayor, this was brought to my attention by, by Mr. Dillon. I wish to address, speak, I wish to address the council. The motion as it reads right now, it could probably go to a subcommittee for discussion, but again, Mr. Dillon has the opportunity to address the council.
All right, registered speaker, Mr. Dillon?
Hello, Mike Dillon, 34 Hampden Street. Thank you for having me tonight. So, this is a motion that really probably should have got taken care of, you know, in January 2019, but as with everything in the term that I just served, nothing really has gone to form. But I think this is a good motion for a lot of different reasons. I think that, well, first, I just want to start by letting everybody know what a special employee is. Maybe the council is, I'm sure, probably aware. But it's, it's really an option for a city or, city or town to designate each position as they please. And so where this comes into my situation is I work on the fire department, and also served as a school committee member. And so, under the special municipal employee status, I would meet that exemption, because I hold a part-time position, which I consider the school committee to be. And I, it, I'm also allowed to work my other job in full. And I was able to keep both jobs separate. And I, I think I have maintained performing both jobs and all the duties to do with both of them during the entirety of my, of my time as a committee member. So prior to the first meeting that I served, I had no indication that I was not going to be paid, or I was not, it wasn't going to work out, according to the law department. I was notified at the first meeting that I served, that I wasn't going to be receiving compensation. So, once I started, I was a new committee member, and I was trying to figure out a lot of different things. And I didn't get a ton of help. Or I didn't feel as though I did. And maybe I needed to ask more. But I did a lot of figuring out on my own, and trying to look into the law. I consulted with the solicitor, the Ethics Commission. And it's, you know, the first question when I asked it to the Ethics Commission was, is, has the committee been, has the committee been assigned special designation? And so we went back, we looked, and it had not been in the past. But that was certainly an avenue that I could pursue. And the Ethics Commission has guided me in that direction. And, you know, so it does work out for me, but I think there are a lot of positives that could also come from it. We just changed our election, election process, and, you know, the message that I heard all throughout was that we want to get more people involved, and we want to have more voices around here and encourage people to run. And I think that people that, you know, live in the city, work in the city, should be encouraged to get involved and potentially run for the school committee. And we have sort of a unique setup with our school department, maybe not unique, but it's maybe different than what people might think, because our school department budget is completely separate from the city budget. And me working as a firefighter, I didn't have to recuse myself from one vote during my term. And, you know, this is certainly not anything against any of my colleagues, but several of my colleagues had to recuse themselves at times because of certain conflicts. And they didn't, that's nothing on them, they didn't do anything wrong, but when conflicts occur, you know, that's what happens. I don't have any conflict. My job as a firefighter is, you know, separate, and that's handled by the city. And if, you know, if I was serving on the city council, of course, that would be different, because that would be the, you know, I would have a direct impact on the body that I worked So I was paid for coaching prior to this, from 2011 to 2018. And, you know, it didn't make sense to me that I was trying to take on more responsibility in the city, and really do more work, and I wouldn't be compensated for it. And so, you know, it kind of has not made sense to me all along the way. And I know everybody sitting in this room understands the commitment that it takes to get involved in politics. You know, I called it a part-time job, but it, it took over my life for a couple of years. And so somebody like myself, who really wants to take on more responsibility, take the opportunity to get into an election and be elected, I think, not only in my case, but I think in the future, I think it would bode well. And, you know, I think it sticks in line with that message of what we've been trying to get across to people as far as our new election process, getting more voices involved, because it's just a job that, you can't really take it on if there is no compensation. Or you can, but, I mean, I was not able to take overtime on the fire department, basically throughout, details, or take on a second job, because it was my second job. Most firefighters have a second job, because, you know, it's just, it's how you raise a family. And I wasn't even, wasn't able to provide all those things for my own family. I also have a small business that I was not able to really contribute to. I used to be a pretty prominent fixture around there. And, you know, so I, I put in a lot of sacrifices myself, and I think anybody that is in this position, I think, you know, this would bode well for the city. We want people that live and work in the city to be involved, and be making decisions and being interested in our schools. I know there were questions, maybe that this may open up a situation where members of the school department could serve, that I've been told by Ethics Commission that's not true. They, there are other conflicts that would, you know, prevent them from filing under this exemption. So I felt like that should be said. And, you know, I'd just like to make myself available for questions, if anybody has any questions. So what we'd be doing is just, it would be officially designated as a special position, and under that exemption, that it's a part-time position, which allows you to work another job, and you're not performing both duties at the same time. And it would work very similar to the same way that I got paid as a coach when I was coaching at the high school. I just believe it's right. It, it really does just seem like the right thing to do. So I, you know, welcome any questions or any comments. I'm here if anybody has any for me. So thank you.
Thank you. Council Rourke?
No, I, I think that Mr. Dillon said that very well. I know that the motion stuff on tonight is a little more general. I guess that could be up for, for discussion, but, you know, with Mr. Dillon here now, and how he has stayed his case, I would like to amend it, and the council to vote to make Mike Dillon Jr. a special employee, just like we do for plow drivers, coaches, going forward. So I'd like to put that in the form of a motion, Mr. Mayor, in a, hold for a second. Thank you.
Okay. I did want to clarify one position with the city solicitor about the comment for the school department. Madam Solicitor?
Yes, the, the comment that members of the school department would not be able to serve as a, on the school committee is not accurate. This, once this vote takes place, if you vote to designate the school committee, special municipal employees, there is a separate process whereby that would then make members of the school department eligible as well. They would just need to come back before this council. So if somebody ran and got elected before they served, they would have to come before the council as to sitting on the school committee. It's under, it's under the same section of 268A, so.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Sure, Council Mercy?
If this were to happen through you to Michael Dillon, are you wanting retroactive? Are you...
Well, yeah, that's obviously something that I would appreciate, and I really think, I think that's right, and I think it should be part of what's going on. I mean, you know, this is a serious miscommunication. I feel like the Ethics Commission told me the opposite of what we just heard, that it would not affect people who are from the school department, because they wouldn't meet the necessary criteria. But the, the money has been earmarked in the budget for the last two years, anticipating that this decision might get made, or should get made.
And who gave you the, I couldn't hear. Who gave you the information at first?
The Ethics Commission. I brought that question up because it had been brought up to me previously about it, and, and, you know, wouldn't, would that open up a can of worms with school department employees? But, I, you know, so, I know you're shaking your head, but, you know, we, okay.
Okay.
It's, it's in the Massachusetts general laws. So once this, if somebody became a special municipal employee under Section 20D, I think it is, they would, if they were a member of the school department, they could then appear before this body, and as a special municipal employee, and the council could hear them out as to why they may or may not have a conflict, and then the council could vote them, grant them essentially a waiver. So, but in order to do that, the committee would have to first be special municipal employees. So I just wanted to make sure that, before you vote, you, you have the correct information.
Okay. All set, Madam?
Let me just say my thoughts on this. And I'm not saying I'm right, but to me, it's a matter of fairness. I try to be fair. If the law would allow individual people, like 268A, it's not like we say everyone in the, that's a teacher can be a coach. We do it on an individual basis. A 268A for, for Suzie, who wants to be a cheerleading coach, or John, who wants to be the soccer coach. I don't know why we couldn't do that with people that are city employees that want to run for the school committee. He's not getting a salary from two places. Isn't he getting a stipend? Isn't that a little bit different? We don't get a salary, we get a stipend, and that's what he gets. I don't see it any different than a coach, or he happens to be a city employee. I'm just concerned that, that's a matter of fairness. Let me give you another example. So two people run for the school committee, and one works as a teacher in the local school system, cannot collect any stipend, but the other teacher that's at a charter school can get, get paid. I find that so unfair. Does the state not donate or give money to the charter school? So what is the difference there? I, I just find that so bizarre. One can get paid and another one can't. I think we should not sweep a broad brush, but try to do it individually. I know you probably want it for everyone, but I think that it should be individually. 268A, Michael Dillon became a school committee person, we should, let's say that he did, then why can't we just vote for him to get that stipend? I, I don't see what the harm is. We budget for it anyway. What happened to that money? It went into free cash, right? I mean, it, it's, it's a very difficult job. I'll tell you, you don't know that unless you're a mayor, that we do a lot of work at city councilors, I can attest to that. But when you're a mayor and you see all the work that a school committee person does, it's like double what we do, and I'm not going to deny that. So I don't have a problem with supporting a 268A. I don't know, Christine, but go ahead.
Yeah, what I was going to say is the, so for, there's, it's, it's a different rule for city versus if you were a member of the school department. So if you were to vote tonight, then members of the city side, if you will, city employees could then run for the school committee, and it would make them eligible for payment. But more fundamentally, it would make them eligible to sit on the school committee, which doesn't exist right now. So a vote to make the school committee special municipal employees would then henceforth, moving forward, allow city employees to run for the school committee. The, what I was speaking to is very similar, I think, to what you were just suggesting, and that is, if you were to vote to make the school committee special municipal employees, it attaches to the entire board, then if you were a employee of the school committee, basically on a case-by-case basis, as you were suggesting, they would have to come before this body, and they could be voted, a waiver, granted a waiver by the...
Right. I don't have a problem with that.
Right, so that's, that's how it would work with the school committee.
I would support that. I would support that.
And I, and I understand your rationale. What I'm saying is the, but it had been stated that a member of the school department could not serve on the school committee, and that's not, that's not correct. It would take an extra step to do it. As far as the vote tonight, it would, it would be a vote to make all of the school committee members special municipal employees, similar to what the council has done with other boards and commissions. Health, Health, Board of Health, the License Commission, they're all special municipal employees.
Well, you know that a certain police officer was a school committee person and collected the stipend at one point in time? You do know that, don't you?
I know that there was a police officer. I have no idea whether he was, he was paid. I mean, it was before...
Well, he was, because I just asked him, and he said he was.
Yeah, and so...
So I don't know what the difference is between a paying a police officer or paying a firefighter. I don't...
Well, right, in order to, sorry to interrupt, but in order to do it, this is what you would, this is what you would have to do. But again, more fundamentally, this is what you would have to do to allow for payment, but it's also what you would need to do to allow somebody to serve in that capacity. So absent this vote, somebody in the future that's a city employee that wants to serve on the school committee couldn't unless you're a special municipal employee.
Do we not have a councilor-elect coming forward that isn't about to be able to get a stipend either, because they're involved with the Vokes School? And I don't think that's fair either.
I, I don't know.
I mean...
I mean, I, I, so this issue came to me from the school, school department contacted the auditor's office, the auditor's office contacted the law department for an opinion, and, and it was, it was deemed that payment wasn't proper, which it's not.
It's not proper?
It, it's not.
Well, is there a way that it can be proper?
This is, this is the way that for, for future...
Well, the major of the motion, do you want to evaluate, you want to find a way to make it happen, or...
I think I should be on record, right? I just made a, made the motion to make Mike Dillon Jr. a special employee.
All right, then.
Just looking for a second.
But it's not, right, it's not Mike Dillon, it's the entire school committee.
So we have certain members of the, of the workforce that come before the council?
Correct.
You know, like, like Mr. Dillon has before to be a coach, or...
It's a little bit different, because it's a, it's an, this is an elected body. It's treated a little bit different under the state ethics laws. But it's very similar to what, to what you're used to doing.
So we want to get a vote tonight?
So a vote tonight would make all, henceforth, the school committee members would become special municipal employees, just like members of the Board of Health, special municipal employees, just like members of all the License Commission for the city are special municipal employees. But it's the, it's the position, and it would apply to, to all the open, all the open positions.
So you're saying that we can't make a motion for one, one individual person?
No.
We, we do it all the time.
It would, it would be, it would be the school committee that would become special municipal...
So if we allow a firefighter to be a plow driver, are we allowing the whole fire department to be plow drivers?
No.
Just those that serve on the school committee, right?
Right. But this would make the school committee special municipal employees.
All right, fine. Here's what it is, like, Mr. Mayor, the motion is out there. Just a second, then I'll take a vote on it.
All right. Council Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to give a little bit of information here, back, I think it's 14 years ago, 14 years ago, I contacted the Ethics Commission in regards to something very similar to this. And I said I wanted to run for school committee, and at the time, I was a housemaster. And they said, "Well, you can run for school committee if you want to, that's not a problem. However, if you get elected, you have a choice." It's as simple as that. So you'd have to step down as a, as a housemaster, because I think that you can see the conflict here that could take place, because I could be a housemaster, and my boss would be the headmaster and the superintendent of schools, but then I become the school committee person, and I become their, their boss. So I think that it becomes a rather complicated situation. And I think on something as serious as, I think it's, it's very important. But taking a look at this, I mean, this is, you know, we're making a decision that I don't think that we necessarily have all the facts, to be quite frank with you. And as far as I'm concerned, I think it would make a lot more sense if the city solicitor would examine that, contact the Ethics Commission, and find out if it's legal, and what is the, is the best case going forward with it, instead of just jumping and making a vote now whether... a vote now whether, whether the vote is right or it isn't right. All I can say is that I got, I got that right from, directly from the Ethics Commission, that I wasn't allowed to. So, and I think that if we take a look at some of the other examples, you know, where individuals might have been collecting, but then they were told that they couldn't, and I think that that's when, that's when they stopped. So, again, I think it gets a little complicated, and, you know, going forward, I think it would make more sense, be prudent, to have the city solicitor give a report on that and contact the Ethics, Ethic Commission to find out exactly what the process would be and how, whether it was feasible or not. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councillor Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through you, just a question to the solicitor. I was wondering if you could just elaborate a little on why, why it is that we can't take a vote to address the case of one person, in this case, Mr. Dillon, to assign special municipal status? Why that is that would have to apply to the entire, the entire school committee, when we can do it for other, other employees? I'm just, I know that Councillor Ruck had attempted to amend the motion, so this would only be addressing one specific case. I just, I'm a little confused by, by why that can't be done. Thank you.
Madam Solicitor?
So, you're, I mean, he, he has one week left. So, I guess I, I also am not clear as to why, what, what is to be serviced by doing it at this, at this stage of the game, when there's one, when there's one week left.
I was waiting for you to finish.
Just, just to follow up on that. I mean, I think, in my mind, given the fact, and you know, asking whether we can address it on an individual case basis, but I'm thinking more in terms of precedent. If there is a future member of the fire department who wishes to serve on the school committee, actually, I find that reasonable, that if they, there's no ethical conflict in them serving and taking votes on issues. I don't really see any reason why they shouldn't be able to receive the stipend, if it's something that we can, we can vote on. I just, I was trying to clarify that if there were an amendment to the motion to make this, you know, an individual case, I'm just trying to understand why, why it would have to apply to the, the full body.
Right. It's, it's different with an elected position, and so it would apply to the positions, and it would apply to the school committee. And, and you can. What I was clarifying is that if the school committee were designated special municipal employees, then city employees would be able to serve as members of the school department, or school committee, rather. What would be different is that, to Councillor Mercier's point, if you were a member of the school department, in order for you to serve in that same capacity as a special municipal employee, that's what would have to be done on a case-by-case basis. Because each, each member of the school department, if they wanted to then take advantage of the status of a special municipal employee, school committee member, they would then have to appear before this council on a, on an individual basis. And that each person would have to get their own waiver based on their own facts and circumstances. But that would not be the case for somebody on the, on the city.
So, is it, is it, I'm sorry, just to make sure. So, is it fair to say that what you're saying is that because it's an elected position, any vote we take, it can't apply to the individual. It has to apply to the position, in your, in your opinion?
Right. My understanding is that they're treated, it's treated, the elected positions are treated different from the non-elected positions.
Thank you.
Councillor Chalston, Councillor Smaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And just to follow along the same line of reasoning and questioning with Councillor Mercier and Councillor Drinkwater, in terms of, I thought early in discussion with Councillor Mercier and stating that you can look at this on a case-by-case basis, and we can do that, and then all of a sudden, we're switching to, it has to be applied to the entire school committee. So, I agree with Councillor Drinkwater, the confusion here. On that point, too, and then a second thing is, Councillor Mercier mentioned that before there was a police officer that received a stipend. I wonder if you can look into that situation, see how that was done, and see if that could be applied to this situation, because I think Councillor Ruck specifically amended his motion just to be on a case-by-case basis, and this case would be for Mr. Dillon. And I don't have a problem either if each elected official, when they want to serve, they happen to work for the city in some position, on a case-by-case basis, they come before the council and make that request. I don't mind either to take a vote on, one by one, on the individual. And I think that that's different, because in the specific case of Mr. Dillon, the, I don't see any conflict with his positions as school committee member and a firefighter. There's no conflict whatsoever. I can understand the argument that if you are serving on a school committee and you have to take votes, that might be in conflict. I would, I would agree with that, that a stipend or salary would not be in the best interest of fairness and independence. So, again, just going back to the situation, if you can look into the situation, how a former police officer was able to collect, and he's a, he's a fighter fighter, I think that's the same situation. Just one more comment on Mr. Dillon. He spoke, explained the situation very well, in terms of there's no conflict, and also how much time it really takes to be an elected official, or any appointed volunteer on, on a city board. Your regular full-time actually becomes part-time, and this is where it's supposed to be part-time. It really does take your life. You spend a lot more time and hours and sacrifice, not only to your time, but to the family's time and quality of life in the family as well. So, it is, it is deserved to look into seriously and into detail on a case-by-cases to encourage members of the community to run for public office. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Smaras?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Councillor Chalston's word, conflict, is actually the whole issue. I can recall, though, a number of years back, when some police or fire department or members of the city wanted to work as coaches at Lowell High School, and they were told they could work as a coach, but they couldn't receive a salary. This was a number of years back, and a lot of work had to be done to ensure that they would get the proper stipend for the job. My confusion here is, at this particular point, is that, and I want to be sure of this, what we're looking for is to give special authorization to the school committee, members of the school committee. But the thing is, as former school committee person Dillon stated, he never had to recuse himself. Thing is, if a teacher decided, "I want to be a member of the school committee," he actually would have to recuse themselves just about in every situation that came in. And if they came before us, I don't see us saying, "It's proper that you be allowed to be a member of the school committee," because they, there is conflict, because they directly can have an effect on the job. Councillor Conway, you know, stated it on the Ethics Commission, he would be the boss, that teacher would now be the boss of the principal of the building. No question about that. But, you know, in this, in this case, Mr. Dillon hadn't, he had, did not have that ability. So, all I see is, we're just, to me, we're just voting on him tonight. Yes, we're opening it up, but I don't see a cavalcade of teachers coming or administrators coming before us, saying, "I want to run for the school committee. I want to get paid," because they would have to come before us. And I don't see any city council saying to a principal or a teacher that, "Yeah, you fit the, you know, it's okay for you to do that." You see my point? I'm just trying to-
Well, I think there's, I think there is confusion. I mean, the, first of all, the, I am not suggesting that there is a conflict, per se, with firefighter and school committee member. What has happened, though, is the, on the question of can an individual serve, the answer is they can't serve until they are deemed, the school committee positions are deemed special municipal employees, which hasn't happened. So, so the auditor can't pay, but more fundamental to that, somebody can't, somebody can't serve. What I was clarifying was the statement that was made, that a member of the school department could not serve, because he had heard, apparently, that somebody was talking about that. And what I was clarifying is, they can, they can serve as a special municipal employee. So, say, like hypothetically, a teacher could serve if the school committee were special, special municipal employee. They could serve as an elected member of that body, so long as they came back before the council and got a waiver.
That's my point.
It's different. It's, they're, they're two different things that were, actually, we're kind of talking about three different things.
Yeah.
But we're talking about city employees, and we're also talking about the potential of school employees serving. And it's two different, two different standards that are met. For the schools, they would have to come back on that case-by-case, case basis.
That's my point. I just wanted to make sure we have that right, so that-
They would have-
That's a protection, that's what I see, a form of protection, so to speak.
Right. They would, I mean, you'd have to, basically, if you didn't grant the waiver, then they'd, then they'd be denied their, their seat. And then, I guess, and then I guess the third thing that we're talking about tonight is, as it relates to Mr. Dillon and taking a vote at this particular point with one week left. And so, if the council wanted to go ahead and take a vote, I mean, what I would recommend is that it just be subject to Mr. Dillon contacting the Ethics Commission again. I mean, as he noted during this, he had reached out to the law department, and he had reached out to the, to the Ethics Commission. So, I would suggest that if you were going to vote, that you could, you could vote to do this, perhaps contingent on him going back to the Ethics Commission and, and just giving a written, a written, a written ruling, which should, which should clarify it pretty, pretty simply.
Mr. Mayor?
Who's that?
Councillor Noon, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Councillor Noon?
Mr. Mayor, so, in these cases, if we to vote, to assign municipal, special municipal employee to the city employee in term of, for the school committee, that means that a future city employee can be, do they have to come before the council to give them that destination?
Who are you asking? The solicitor?
Mr. Mayor, to city solicitor, please. Thank you, sir.
Did you hear the question?
Was it?
You want to repeat the question?
With respect to, with respect to-
Yes, thank you. So, so, does that apply now to futures, a city council, future municipal employee? All of them, or they have to come before the council, one by one, if that's the case?
If they were, if they were from the school department, they would have to appear one by one, and if it were members of the city workforce, then they, they would be covered by the special municipal designation.
Okay, okay. So, this, this vote will be retroactive, I mean, will be automatic to the future city employees, correct?
Moving forward.
Christine?
Moving forward.
Moving forward, okay. Okay, okay. You know, I'm more concerned, Mr. Mayor, with regard to the member of the school staff who come before us for that special municipal employee assignment. But, you know, I guess the council know not, not to allow that, because as Councillor Conway indicated that, you know, you know, a school, a teacher can then running for city, of a school committee, and that now becoming the boss of his, of his or her principal, and that doesn't, that shouldn't work right. But in the case of Mike Dillon, I know that Mike have worked, you know, very hard on the school committees, and, you know, he served the city well. And so, I understand that a short time have left, but if, if, if the recommendation of the city solicitors that Mike, you know, we, we make Mike a municipal, a special municipal employee tonight, and ask, and asking Mike to go before the city, I mean, to the, to the Ethic, is that Ethic Commission?
Yeah. I mean, my recommendation is, if the council wanted to move forward tonight, well, I mean, there was a motion on the table to, to get a, an opinion from, I guess, the law department and also the State Ethics Commission. They're the ones that ultimately would decide these things, and they, and they have. They've previously weighed in. And so, my recommendation would be, if the council wanted to move forward, you could vote, and subject to getting a written opinion back from the State Ethics Commission. Then there'd be-
Why, why the State-
Then there'd be no, no confusion.
Why the State Ethic, Ethic Commission? Because from what we heard, Mike indicated that, you know, he checked with them, and they said, "Okay."
Well-
Christine?
Yeah. The, there may, you know, anyway. That would be my recommendation, particularly if what you're really looking to do is to actually pay somebody retroactively. I'm not sure that, how that's done. Municipal employees are, are not paid retroactively. So, again, if that's what, if that's what the goal is, I think that the, the simple answer is, the council could go forward, cast a vote, but make it conditioned on receiving something back from the State Ethics Commission on this issue in writing. And, and I mean, if it's-
Mr. Mayor, can I ask?
If it's allowed-
Mr. Mayor, thank, thank you. Thank you, Christine. Mr. Mayor, can I ask the maker of the motion, Councillor Ruck, if he okay with that, make it vote on it, a yes, with conditions that Mike go into the State Ethic Commission? Can I ask, Councillor Ruck, the maker, is he okay with that?
Sure, we can ask that. Can I just get clarification on one thing first? Do you mind?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Can I just get, so, what, we're not looking at school employees running for school committee. We're looking at the opposite. So, we're looking at a person who works for the city, running for school committee, and/or a person in the school department running for a city council seat. So, doesn't that make a big difference, madam, madam solicitor?
Yeah. I, I didn't bring up that, that hypothetical. It was brought up by the speaker, and I was trying to clarify it, that that wasn't accurate. So, if you're under the impression that a member of the school department could not serve as a special municipal employee, they can. They would have to first be a special municipal employee, but then they would have to come back before this body to get a, to get a waiver.
All right. So, my question is, when you, when you said that if we vote the way it is tonight, that the entire city council, the entire school committee becomes a special municipal employee?
Right. They would become special municipal employees.
Are they not elected, are they not an elected body at that point? They're not elected anymore because they're special?
No, no. No, they're-
Okay. So, I'm, okay. I'm just confused on that, but-
So, it's treated different. The State Ethics Laws treats elected positions different from other positions. So, there would be school committee members. They would be elected officials, but they also would be special, they would have the status of special municipal employees. Again, it's like-
I just don't see the difference, if I can interrupt. I just don't see the difference of one person working for one side and running for the elected position on the other side, if you will. There's school and city. If you work for the city, I don't see the problem running for school, and I don't see the problem if you work for the school department, running for a city council seat. I don't understand the conflict there.
So, the, I mean, the way the law is right now, if- So, the, I mean, the way the law is right now, if, somebody would not be able to do that unless you took this, this action. I mean, that's what the law is, that's why, that's why he's here today.
Right, so, we can't vote tonight to just say that a city employee on the city side has, can run for school committee? We can't just select one individual at a time?
Well, what I was suggesting is, you could vote, but I would recommend that you just vote and, and, and request that there be a, an opinion from the State Ethics Commission, a written opinion, coming back, coming back to the council.
All right, thank you. Councilor Rock?
There's a motion on the floor, you know, to grant a waiver, or however you want to word it, to, to, you know, grant, you know, Mike Dillon, you know, special employee, you know, if we have to put the State Ethics opinion in there, if that's what satisfies, you know, the body, that's fine by me, but, just, just think it's time to move the question.
Okay, all right, so, move the question. Counsel Elliot?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the motion as presented is to assign special municipal employee status. Now, if the amendment is to change specifically for Mr. Dillon, I, I would argue that's a substantial change to the motion, and it wasn't advertised under the open meeting law, first and foremost, so, I think that's a concern, first and foremost. Secondly, the law is written specifically to protect municipalities from two individuals not holding two positions, but collecting two salaries. So, the, I, I'm confused, but first, let, let me thank Mr. Dillon for your service to the city. It's not easy, it's not easy raising a family and serving in office full-time, and you did it full-time. So, but on the, on the motion, I, I don't understand why this is coming in the last meeting at the end of the year. It, it should have been brought up well before this. This is, this needs proper vetting. There are, there are many variables to this, and to me, the law is very clear. A special municipal employees, yes, we do designate special municipal employees that hold, that work for the city, and coach, or tutor, or other jobs, but they're special case-by-case basis that come before this council and, and reevaluate them, just like we did just a couple of weeks ago. To me, the law was put in place to address ethics issues and conflict of interest that we're talking about right now. So, I, I understand the point, but yet, this vote, without proper vetting, you know, is a designation, it will have far-reaching ramifications and potential host of conflict of interest. Again, case-by-case basis, to allow, to allow for special circumstances, special municipal employees. So, I, I, I don't understand how we can do this, I don't understand the legality of, even if he is designated, Mr. Dillon is designated as a special municipal employee, that had to be done at the beginning of the term in order to have that designation and be allowed to collect the salary. I've never heard, I don't think, I, I mean, we'll have to look at finance laws to find out if that is even possible to be paid retroactively. You needed the designation, and then you can be eligible for that salary. So, I, I, I feel that we need to get more answers on exactly what this designate for school committee people will do, what the implication, and clearly, it's going to set up a precedent, as was mentioned earlier, for city council candidates. And yes, there was a police officer, he did serve, he did collect, and then when it was realized that he was not eligible, it was stopped. So, I think the legislature put this law, 268A, in, in place to provide direction on conflict, conflict of interest, and to protect cities and towns across the motion. I'm not going to support the amendment, I don't think it's, I, I really don't think it's legitimate, quite frankly. It's a substantial change from the original intent of the motion, we've heard time and time again, that, that could be potentially be a violation. It has, certainly would have had to been advertised as such, in my opinion. So, I, I'm not going to support the motion, I understand the intent behind it, but the potential for adopting this, to me, clearly has wide-ranging effects, and, and I think we, the city council and the people of the city, need to get those information before, you know, taking this vote. Conflict of interest, it talks about a lot of things, including divided loyalties. So, I think we have to be very careful, I, I think that we should get information, a report, before making any vote. I'm not going to support the amendment, but I'd be willing to make an amendment that we get, a report on what the implications are, who could benefit, potentially benefit, what the effects are for other employees, and what the effect is on the city. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor. And again, just a clarification, Section 52 does stipulate that teachers cannot run and be eligible, so, that's, that's my thoughts, thank you.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let me tell you, in my personal opinion, what I feel is a conflict of interest. When we have union contracts to be dealt with, we, as a council, don't, we don't negotiate, we probably ratify it after it's been negotiated by the city manager, and probably Christine, the solicitor, but we don't have anything to do with that. But, on the school committee side, the very people that you're accountable to, the teachers, they negotiate the teachers' contract, I find that so bizarre, that's unbelievable. I think every school committee person should be removed from negotiating contracts for the school committee, for the school teachers. That's my personal opinion, to me, that's a conflict. But, be that as it may, we have mass general laws in zoning. The rules are black and white, but there's some gray areas because there's a word called avariance. Avariance says, it's really not allowed, you can't build that shed until it's 10 feet away from the house, but if you lived on my street, on Royal Street, many years ago, our sheds, right along, was like two feet away from the house. Now, what are we going to do? Tell everybody on the street, take them down? No, you file avariance. So, people come before the council and say, I want to get a, I'm getting a salary as a teacher, or I'm getting a salary as a firefighter, or I'm getting a salary as a firefighter, but I want to plow for the city because there's a need for it. We voted a 268A and allow that to happen. So, I don't know what's different with this, I really don't. I would make a suggestion, I want to get answers too, but sometimes you get an answer that you're not sure what's happening here. I vote that we support the motion, subject to get an opinion from the solicitor in regards to the Ethics Commission. I say, we move the question and take a vote.
All right, move the question.
Mr. Mayor?
That's the motion.
Mr. Mayor?
Who's...
Is, can I, is there any way I can speak and maybe try to clear a couple of things up?
I kind of think we're, I don't think you can allow you to speak at this point, so we'll just have to take the vote and see what...
There's a lot of confusion here, I feel like I can...
Well, I'll suspend the rules and allow this man to continue.
Suspend the rules from to speak by Counselor Rock, Counselor Mercy, a seconded by Counselor Chow.
Thank you. You know, the, first on the Ethics Commission, when I spoke, I spoke to the Ethics Commission yesterday, trying to seek something in writing on the opinion, and they were sort of, the lawyer that I spoke to was sort of puzzled as to what I actually needed. She said this is a common, a common occurrence, and it's, you know, up to, you know, municipalities to make that decision and, and make that move. On the teacher issue, Ms. Solicitor, I wasn't, I wasn't trying to say that, I, we got crossed up, I understand what you're talking about, about the teachers, and I wasn't trying to say that they could not run, but they would be subject to other parts of conflict of interest law that wouldn't, probably not just allow them to get paid the same way as I would, or a city worker would. And I think you, that's sort of exactly what you clarified, they would have to go an extra step and come before the body in order to, you know, make that happen. So, I don't really see that as anything crazy, or anybody in the school department that, you know, could really take advantage of, or, it would still be up to the council. And as for why this is coming up right now, you're telling me, I mean, you know, I mean, you know, I wanted this to happen, but I didn't, I wasn't told, I wasn't notified by anybody, and in fact, I found out through the grapevine, that not, you know, I didn't find out until the first meeting, until I was sitting down right here for the first meeting that I wasn't going to be paid. And I did a lot of this figuring out on my own. And, you know, if anybody's questioning why it's happening right now, I'm here, speaking in front of everybody, and this whole mess has turned into a personal situation for me. It's not easy on me, it's not easy on my family, the Lowell Sun's going to be printing headlines about me, they love to do that, this is not fun for me. I've been pushing this off because, well, my job was more important, what I was doing on the committee. This is not a sneak attack, this is not some way for me to get money going out the door, I've wanted to push this forward for a long time, but I didn't, I had more important things to do. So, you know, to insinuate that, that's why I, I wanted this to happen in January 2019, and it should have happened before I even served a, you know, a second in the, in the position. But, all indications were that I was going to get paid, I was already on the school department payroll, and I didn't, I, I, I thought I would do the same thing, I would get a signature from the superintendent, a signature from the chief of the fire department, ensuring that they say that I can work both jobs, and it would go that way. So, you know, it's, it's, you know, everybody's, everybody's here talking about my personal situation, this is not fun for me. This is why I haven't, you know, come in here prior to this. And, you know, I, I didn't know what was going to happen when I, you know, when, when we finally put it in, and I didn't want to put myself through this, and I didn't want to put my family through this. So, questioning why it didn't happen until now, I didn't get any help, I didn't get any help from the city. And, and tonight, all has been, is confusion, and I'm at the center of it. So, that's why, you know, this is happening right now.
We'll try to resolve it as quick as we can.
Just the other thing, another thing is, you know, I, I don't, I don't think there's anything negative or, or crazy that's going to come out of this in the future. I don't understand why, and take me out of it, this should pass. If you don't, if, if I don't get paid, this, this is right. I mean, if there is no conflict, and like I stated, I have less of a conflict, and I had to recuse myself from zero votes, when, you know, other people on the committee had to recuse themselves, couldn't even vote because there is direct conflict. I think this is the right thing to do, and seeing that the school budget is at the purview of the, the school committee, I don't even know that, I don't know, does, does the school committee make that decision? I mean, I would, I would be perfectly fine with, you know, passing this motion and dealing with me, you know, however that needs to get done, I guess. I, I, I think what's right is what should happen.
Okay.
At the end of the day.
Move, move the question, roll call.
Right, motion by Counselor Rock, with the amendment from Counselor Mercy, a seconded by Counselor Mercy, roll call.
Counselor Mercy?
Yes.
What's the motion, Mr. Mayor? Read it, please. The motion was, is the clerk there?
I have the motion stating, request a, designate Mr. Dillon as a special municipal employee, subject to a, subject to a, a moment of ethics opinion.
Thank you. Roll call.
Counselor Mercy?
Yes.
Seconded by Counselor.
Counselor Noon?
Yes.
Counselor Rock?
Yes.
Counselor Samaras?
Yes.
Counselor Chow?
Yes.
Counselor Conway?
Yes.
Counselor Drinkwater?
Yes.
Counselor Elliott?
No.
Mayor Leahy?
Yes.
All right, motion passes. All right, thank you, Mr. Dillon. Thank you, Counselor Rock. Are there any announcements before we, or Counselor Mercy?
Yes, thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. On this past Saturday, December 18th, me, Danny Rock, Corey Robinson, and a few others that I can't remember the rest of them, we went to Mount Hope Street outside Dwelling House of Hope, previously Jean Doc's church, and what once started in a basement at the person's home, has multiplied to 700 cars that drove up to the church, and they were met by a crew of people led by the founder and executive director, Lavinia, Lavinia Farusa, and dealt out food to over 700 cars, and toys to over 500 children. Because of the holidays, the numbers rise, but on every Saturday, except this Saturday being Christmas, people come and they get food. I have never, ever experienced anything like this. Cars were lined up around the block of six streets in Pottagankville, so, I felt good to know that people that needed it were going to get toys for their children and food for their families. It was just amazing, and I know that Counselor Rock can attest to that as well, Corey Robinson is here. I have never, ever seen anything like it, and it started out in the ladies' basement. I think sometime in January, we should have her here and give her some sort of a citation. She's not looking for anything. It, it, it was a sight to see. I've never, ever seen anything like it. So, we have good people in this city to make, not that there's not other organizations, there's San Santa, the Salvation Army, but there are people that you don't even hear about, that's why I had to say it. So, that's my announcement for today, and I publicly thank Lavinia for, for what a marvelous job that her and her crew did. And I have to say that she had young people there, like 16, 17, that could speak Camer, that could speak Spanish, it was amazing. So, there were no language barriers at that Saturday event. Thank you for letting me say that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, being the last meeting of the year, I'll start, I just want to say thank you to Counselor Samaras, Counselor Elliott, Counselor Conway for your service, appreciate all your years of service, appreciate everything you've done, you dedicate a lot of time to this position, and the city should be thankful for everything that you've put forward over your terms, and we appreciate it, and I personally want to say thank you to the three counselors. Does anybody want to speak on first, Counselor Samaras?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have any speech, but I just feel I've had the good fortune to be able to work with two excellent city managers, city manager Kevin Murphy, and now city manager Eileen Dunhu, it's been an honor and a privilege to be able to work with you, and I hope to be able to continue on, you know, being of some help to the city. You know, it's been an honor to have, have the opportunity to serve the people of Lowell, that's the only way you can say it. I mean, I, I think a lot of people say, why do you do this? You do this because you've, you have a true feeling that you can do some good. And I would hope that when people review my voting record, they'll say, one thing that I tried to do was enhance the quality of life for everyone. And when you have the opportunity to be part of something like that, there's no better experience, and I'm just very proud to have worked with every member that's here, and I'm proud of the work that we've been able to do, and, you know, and be able to say, I was part of that, it doesn't get better than that. Thank you for your words, Mr. Mayor, and wish everybody the best. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Chow?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too want to thank Counselor Conway, Counselor Elliott, and Counselor Samaras for their, their service. I, I truly am going to miss your, your experience, your, your leadership on the council. I learned so much, I absorbed from the many times that we met for a coffee with Counselor Samaras and Counselor Conway, and meeting Counselor Elliott at many of the Cambodian functions, and we always snuck in a conversation about politics, our roles, what we do in the community, so, I felt like I absorbed their, you know, their combined of experience of decades, decades of service to, to the community, and I thank you so much. And I thank you so much, a heartfelt thank you to, to your service to, to our city. Thank you.
Council Mercy?
Yes, thank you very much. I too want to congratulate and say how it was such a pleasure to serve with Council Conway, Council Elliott, and, and Council Samaras, who were a wealth of wisdom. And when you serve on the council for 24 years, as Council Elliott did, that's quite a feat. I'll tell you that. And I've always enjoyed working with him and calling him and exchanging ideas, as I have with Council Conway and Bill Samaras. And this being your last meeting as mayor, it is an honor for me and this council to present to you the gavel. So I want you to have this gavel, and I do not want you to use it as a weapon. Do you understand that? So let's give the mayor a round of applause.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Sure, Mr. Clerk.
Mr. Mayor?
Yep.
I just want to recognize your efforts up on the podium these past two years. It's been a difficult, a difficult time, and you can handle it admirably. It's been a pleasure serving with you. I look forward to a continued relationship with you. And that's just kind of like a starter kit for the gavel, Mr. Mayor. You can carry that one in the car. There's a bigger one, more commemorative coming, so you can put it on the mantle of ours. And thank you, thank you for your service, Mr. Samaras, and it has been enjoyable.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else want to speak? Council Rock?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I too would just take this opportunity to thank you in the mayor's position, but also Councilors Conway, Elliott, and Samaras. You know, the council as a whole, why not always agreeing, serve the city very well under the manager's direction. You're sad to see them go, but I'm sure they'll still be involved in the city and its, you know, your future. And, you know, look forward, at the same time, to the new council coming in. But, you know, tonight's more of a, a reflection of all the great things that, you know, Councilors Conway, Elliott, and Samaras have done, and also your time as mayor. So thank you all, and look forward to moving on. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Drinkwater?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just want to take a moment to, to thank my, my colleagues for their, their service over the years, Councilors Conway, Elliott, and, and Samaras. And just want to mention that, especially coming in as a new counselor this year, you're trying to, you know, soak every, everything up and drink water from a fire hose, so to speak. So you're watching what everybody does and trying to learn from, from your more experienced colleagues. So just want to thank each of you for, you know, providing some good mentorship for, for me to learn the position, and couldn't learn from, from anybody better. So really appreciate all of your service. It's been great to, to learn from you and, and serve with, with each one of you. And I know you'll all contribute, continue to contribute to the, the city in, in ways of your choosing, and, and look forward to working with you in that capacity. And thank you as well to, to you, Mr. Mayor. I think you've served very admirably over these last couple of years, with many unforeseen and important issues that have come up. So, so thank you very much. And once again, it's been an honor to serve with each of you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure. Council Nun?
Mr. Mayor? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, thank you for your leadership during this term despite COVID. You were able to lead the council and work with, you know, every department and the managers. And we have been successful because of the, the teamwork that we have on the council, your leadership, as well as the, the expertise of Council Elliot in terms of finance. We're going to miss a decade of experience that he has had. You know, I hope that he does not mind that, you know, we call on him every now and then asking questions regarding finance. As far as Council Samaras, now, we don't have to hear him saying, you know, principal of the high school anymore. So, but we, we will hear him, of course, that, you know, he will call in, you know, but I miss him. I miss him greatly, as well as Council Conway. You know, I'm, I'm glad that both of them are, are, are having all this free time for their grandchildren coming forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Madam Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And through you to the council, I too want to join in and, and thank everybody, especially you, Mr. Mayor, Council Samaras, Council Elliott, Council Conway, and, and actually every council, counselor. This has been a term like no other. When you think about it, it started off in 2019, but before we know it, the pandemic hit. It actually started out in 2020. And in January, you, Mr. Mayor, came in, and within less than three months, we were, found ourselves in a full eye of a hurricane, and in terms of the pandemic, and it hasn't really let up. I think I want to credit the, you know, collaboration of everybody on the council, the wisdom, the experience that everybody brought that has helped us steer this ship through the hurricane, has put the city in a very good place, and has, you know, served the needs of the people here in the city throughout this pandemic. And, and without the efforts of every single one of you, it wouldn't have been possible. And so I want to thank you for the honor and privilege of being the manager during this time. And again, I, I, I too will miss hearing Council Samaras saying, you know, I was the headmaster of the little high school. I think there was a bet going, if there was a dollar for every time you said that, then someone would be a very wealthy person. Council Elliott, you know, the, the, the financial acumen that you've brought to this, even back in the day when I was on the council and sitting with you as a colleague, you know, you really showed your expertise. And that was always very, very useful, not just at budget time, but throughout, throughout the year. So thank you for, for what you've done for the city. And Councilor Conway, you know, you have brought your passion to the city council. You had your passion at the school committee previously. I think many people thought that was your first love, was the school, schools and school children. But you transitioned to being a city counselor, keeping all of that commitment and passion to the schools, but broadening it and, and have done a marvelous job for the city of Lowell. Lastly, Mr. Mayor, I can't think of a tougher job for a mayor. I know for former mayors who are here, it can be a delight to be the mayor. You can go to ribbon cuttings, you can go to openings. And you were pretty much denied that throughout this pandemic. Business wasn't going on as usual for big chunks of time. And yet, you were able to rise above that, reach out, and do great things for, whether it's small business, community members, the schools. I think everybody would also agree that one of the toughest jobs is the school committee. And you have been through, again, pandemic especially, dealing with all of the school committee issues. And you've been dedicated and have really done a great job. So, and you've been in good humor throughout this. So thank you, Mr. Mayor, for, for your service. It was different than many years as people as mayor, but you did a great job. So thank you, and, and thank you to each and every one of you. And I, I hope everybody has a happy and healthy Christmas and New Years.
Thank you. Sure, Council Conway? Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And if you think that you heard the headmaster mention that he was the headmaster at Lowell High School many times, please keep in mind, I also worked with him for over 20 years. Believe me, I heard that many, many more times. So anyway, I, 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 I want to say that as a young, as a young individual, young teacher in my early twenties, I used to come to school committee meetings and city council meetings because that was kind of the thing to do. Wasn't on television. We didn't have the same type of technology as we have today. And it was kind of a night out. And you would find that there'd be, quite a few people would be, would attend the school committee and city council meetings. And I used to sit there or stand there and listen and say to myself, wow, that is really a cool thing for these people to be sitting in these chairs and to do the business of the school department and the city itself. I said, wow, what a privilege. And when I think about it, I've been here for 12 years. Eight years as a school committee person and four years as a city councillor. And I will say that I am very happy to be here. It was an enjoyable run, should we say? When I look back, I, I, I say to myself, how was I associated with the city of Lowell directly? 38 years as a, as a teacher and a housemaster, and eight years as a school committee and, and four years as a city councillor. And if you add that up, that's 50 years. That's a long time. So, and during that time, I, I will say that I met a lot of people. And I, I just want to thank, I just want to give a shout out and thank some people because, you know, we wouldn't be able to do our job as well as we do or try. Again, whether it was a, a teacher, or a housemaster, or a school committee man, or, or a city council, unless we have a tremendous amount of resources and people, good people surrounding us in order to do that job. And I will say that as a housemaster, I want to thank all those teachers out there and the powers and guidance councilors and administrators. All these people work very hard. I was fortunate enough to be there and see this as Mr. Samaras on a, a full-time basis. And they work extremely hard, and I give them a lot of credit. When I went on to the school committee, it was, it was kind of a unique experience because all those people on the school committee were my bosses. When I was a, a housemaster, and then all of a sudden, I run for office in mid-year, retired, and then spent eight years on the school committee. And I, and I will say that it was a great, a great experience. And I was able to go into all those schools and see not just one level of education, but also the middle school and the elementary school. And I saw firsthand the incredible work that the teachers, that the teachers actually do. And, and then on the, on the, on the city council, it was, it was new to me. And it took, I, I was very, very happy to be able to be surrounded by some people right here, these councillors, that have a tremendous amount of information and knowledge and understanding, more than I did about some of the specifics. And I will say that, you know, I thank the, you know, the Rodney Elliott's and the Rita Mercys because, again, they had institutional understanding of what, what actually went, went on in the city council. And again, I, I thank the both of you for, for that, the tutoring that I need, and needed at the time. And I also, I also think that everyone sitting here, everyone sitting here tried to do the very best job they possibly can to reach that goal. You know, again, going back when I was in my younger days and observing school committee and city council, I couldn't believe how passionate they were. Kind of really arguing back and forth. But at the end of the day, they were friends. They respected each other's opinion and each other's vote. And I think somewhere along the line, that's kind of diminished a bit. And I certainly hope that it comes back stronger on all levels. And especially here, I, I, I have all the confidence. We have good councillors, excellent councillors, leading our city. And we also have new councillors out here with new blood, with new ideas. And I think we all need to support each and every one of them, and I think it's extremely important. I will say, and just very, very briefly, city council, I worked directly with a number of people, and I want to say, I want to thank people. Kara Keef, I, I call you all the time. And I know some of the questions probably were kind of dumb, but I, I will say that you're always there, always helping out. And not just me, but the other councillors too. And again, I, I thank you very much for your assistance in the work that you have done. Connor Baldwin, I'm so thankful that you have dumbed down the business side of it so that even I could understand it. As I've often said to you, you pay the bills over here, my wife pays the bills at home. And thank heavens, you know, I, I have, we have people like yourself that, you know, keep the finances going and understand the, the particulars. And I think that because of that, you'll see that we obviously have a great rating. And, and that's, and that's due to so many different people working together. Michael Geary, again, I talked to him many times, and, and Michael Geary and his staff, they do a great job. Christine McCall, you know, I, I, again, I've talked to her, we've met. She does an absolutely fantastic job. Chris O'Connor, we don't necessarily always agree, but again, as, as someone said to me, one of my individuals that I, I lean on quite a bit, I say, well, I, I think she might be wrong on that because that's not logical. And as, as this individual said, law isn't necessarily logical. Sometimes it isn't. So you have to be careful with this. So again, I thank you very much for, for helping out and giving some great advice over the years. I think that, Chris, and by the way, also your team, fantastic team. Celine Giddings, great job. Mary Calery and her staff. I will say that Commissioner Christine Clancy, I don't know how she does it. She is, I, I've, I've worked with her a number of times, and I will say she's extremely knowledgeable, and she's able to multitask and does an absolutely fantastic job. And then it comes to the last individual here on the city council floor, the city manager. And I want to thank you, Madam Manager, for all your hard work. I certainly appreciate it, like I'm sure that we all do here in the, in the residence of Lowell. And, and your staff. I mean, you know, you, you surround yourself with great people, and that certainly is a sign of a, of a, an excellent leader. So again, I, I thank you for that. You know, you go into your office, and it's run so well. You've got Shana there, and Hannah, and Phil, and they're always there to help out. So again, I thank you for all your work. This is a difficult time, as you said to, about the mayor. The mayor and you are going through some incredible times that city managers and mayors did not have to put up with. There were no templates on to figure out how to do these things. You people had to create them right from scratch. So again, you, you multitask, and you did a great job. And the last point I'm going to make, I tried to combine this, this 50 years into as, as quick as I possibly can, but I, I, I want to reach out and thank some very, very important people in my life, and that is my wife for putting up with, with this and, and the advice and the guidance that she gave. And my wife, Mary, and I, I thank her very much. And, and also, I, I have to thank my two daughters. Thank heavens I have them. They're extremely bright. I was smart enough when I was younger to marry somebody a lot smarter than I was. So we have two great daughters, and they're very bright, and they're both attorneys. And they certainly helped give me advice over the, over the years. And again, it's going to be, it's going to be difficult, but I will say, I think that this, this council coming up, I think is going to do an excellent job. And lastly, I want to thank all the voters and, and all the people that worked hard in my campaigns. I want to thank them very much. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Council Elliott?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Madam Manager, my-
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Madam Manager, my colleagues on the council. This is it. It's been such an honor to be elected to the Lowell City Council for the last 24 years and mayor of the city of Lowell, place where I was born, place where I raised my children, place where you raise, you make so many memories. I've been so fortunate that the voters have placed their trust in me all these years. I've been blessed by such a loving family. My father was my inspiration in politics. He was my best friend. And 15 years later, I still miss him so. But to my two daughters and my wife, I owe you a lifetime of gratitude. My wife was the, wrote many clever radio ads, she was the brains behind the operation, and she was a better city council than I was. 24 years of stuffing envelopes, holding signs, every other thing, it's a lot to ask. You've all stood by me through thick and thin all these years. And throughout it all, I never missed any of my girls' events. My girls are my pride and my joy, and they're amazing nurses. I love you all, and I I thank you for tolerating the stress that public life often brings onto a family. To the voters, supporters for the last 20 years, I hope I served you with integrity and honor. Even when faced with adversity, I am forever grateful for your support and placing your trust in me. Now, I don't know where 24 years went. Sometimes it seems like a lifetime, then again, it's like a blink of the eye. I can say I've served with many distinguished city councillors in 24 years, including the longest-serving member, Richard Howe, who I sat next to as long as he was on the council. He sat right in this very chair, your father, Mr. Mayor, sat right in this desk. And you, Madam Mayor, we sat next to each other. There were so many other city councillors and mayors, and it's been a pleasure. I've served through five city managers, all, and I worked under two, actually, all who brought passion and dedication to this job and made Lowell a better place to live, work, and raise a family. We have to thank all of our partners in the city, businesses, nonprofits, neighborhood leaders. You make the difference in Lowell. You do the work, and we look good. And to you, Councilor Mercier, we've served longer together than any other councillors. We were a team, we are a team. Contrary to what people may say, not for a moment did I equivocate on your, our friendship. Perhaps occasionally we disagreed over 24 years, but you will always, you are and you will always be my dear friend. I respect your dedication and your commitment to public service. We've been down many a road together. We traveled halfway around the world together, and we've had many laughs along the way, and I will miss you. I hope my services left Lowell a better place. I took the job serious every day. I felt I'd been instrumental in stabilizing taxes and finances and played a small role in moving Lowell forward. But the greatest satisfaction is to be able to help the people who call you. I know in my heart I've done my best to represent each and every person in the city. I vowed to be a voice for the people when I ran, and I feel I leave this hallowed chamber with gratitude and appreciation. But all things must come to an end. So we close this chapter in life, have no regrets, and we move on to the night, the next. Life has been quite a journey, and I think I've been a lucky guy. I have no idea what the future brings for me, and I have no plans, but I'm committed to continue to remain involved at some level because we finish strong. Godspeed to you, Madam Manager, and the incoming council. You and your team have done yeoman's work during these extraordinary times. The three Christines, Clancy, McCall, O'Connor, you're tireless workers and consummate, and two professionals. Connor Baldwin, you and I have probably worked more together than anyone else. You're a talented individual, you're a hard worker, you're dedicated, I call you on weekends as Chair of the Finance, I don't know how many times I've called you, but the city's fortunate to have you, and I hope you don't go anywhere. Thanks to so many others, Chief Richardson, Sulemae, Chief DeRozes, I don't know, the list goes on and on, over 24 years, City Clerk. I've had so many, I've had the pleasure of working with so many, and it's been an honor. Mr. Mayor, congratulations to you. People think being mayor is a glamorous job, which you can be, but it's a tireless job, and you have worked hard. You brought your own style to the office, and you served well. You have a good heart. So thank you to everyone. I wish you all well, and I wish everyone happy holidays. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor Chow, you forgot one thing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's hard to go after these councillors spoke about their gratitude about serving, and gratitude to all the city employees and colleagues. But I didn't want to be left out in thanking you, as a mayor also. And I don't want to be too sappy either, because you know how I feel and appreciative I am of your leadership and your friendship. So I'm going to just say one quick thing. I just want to let the public know, you have done amazing things, as Madam Manager mentioned, you accomplished a lot. One thing that you did that will always stays with me, which you made history also, you hired the first Cambodian-American female to be really the highest level, at the seat level of employment, Corinica Brown. So I thank you for really being progressive and just working with everybody every which way you can. So thank you for that.
Thank you. Well, we're going to miss everybody. Councilor Samaras?
No, I just want to make a correction, Mr. Mayor. Councilor Noon said that I would often say, principal of Lowell High School, it was headmaster of Lowell High School.
Yes.
Just want to make sure that's that's clear. But thank you for everything.
Thank you. All right, well, thank you for everybody's service. Going to miss everybody. We have a couple of parting gifts up here, so don't run out. Merry Christmas to everybody, have a safe holiday, and need a motion to adjourn by Councilor Rourke, second by Councilor Mercier. Thank you.